Good evening, welcome to the West Georgia Planning Commission meeting for January 5th, 2016. I'll note that all members of the commission are present tonight. We have some housekeeping items to take care of before we jump into our agenda. The first item is swearing in of our new and reappointed commissioners.
(coughing) Oops, sorry.
Take that one.
I don't know what I did there, sorry.
(coughing) (inaudible) 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 Welcome back for three more years, Judy, it's gonna be great to have you here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, being a new year, we have the opportunity to elect a new Chair and Vice Chair. Commissioner Pack.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to nominate you, Jan Moss, for Chairman for 2016.
Second.
I'll accept that nomination.
Move the clothes.
What? No other nominations for Chair? I think we can just vote for voting, couldn't we, Julie?
(inaudible)
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sounds good, we'll do that for Vice Chair. I'm gonna nominate Commissioner Pack here.
Second.
Thank you, all accept the nomination, thank you.
You need a nomination for Vice Chair? Okay, this might be the easiest I've seen this done in six years. Any, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Any opposed? I think we're there.
Thank you.
For the public. We also have two positions open on the Design Review Committee, of which we are going to make, we get to make two appointments for that, discussing in our pre-meeting Commissioner Hanson and Commissioner Hyer. They volunteered to be those liaisons for us on the DRC. Thank you for that. We did a little bit of a rearrangement on our agenda to try and streamline things tonight. Items four and five will be on a consent calendar, so I would entertain a motion for those two items.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hanson, second by Commissioner Pack, any discussion to the motion?
Just clarification on that condition.
Backing up just a little bit, we did have a, staff presented us with a slight wording change on Condition 1, that just changing, removing the word "city staff" from that first condition there.
There was also the, could name it in consideration.
In consideration, I think was the.
There were two changes on that.
Yeah.
It says "staff requirements," in consideration, and that was changed to say "requirements" for it.
Based on the change presented to us in the pre-meeting. There we go. Any discussion to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. And then we're gonna run our public hearing first, it sounds like item number six might take a little bit more time tonight, so we'll begin with the SME Steel Sandblasts Building Rezone on 5650 West Old Bingham Highway, considering a rezone of 13 acres from CM to M1, SME Steel is the applicant, the time is now yours.
Hi, my name is Ken Salt, and Representative of SME Steel, and we're requesting the commission's approval of a rezoning from CM to M1.
Okay, any other thoughts about that, reason behind or?
Part of the reason is to allow us to construct a building there that's over the 35-foot height that CM governs, and M1, the building is actually 41 feet, so changing the zoning will allow us to construct that.
Okay, any questions for the applicant? Doesn't sound like it, thank you. And we'll turn it over to Mr. McCallas.
Thank you, I won't go into a lot of detail on this, and then you did review the condition list for outdoor storage back in November, that concerned, we're looking at putting in a new building on the property, but couldn't make it fit under the CM zoning requirements. Our computer's locked up, so I'd show you the site, but I think that's contained within your packets. The request is to rezon the property from CM to M1, given that it's next to M2 zoning, that it's by now in the corridor, so we really don't see any issues or concerns for approving the zone change at this location. So, with that, and given the fact that it's consistent with our general plan, we recommend approval of the reported positive recommendation to the City Council to rezon the property.
Any questions for staff?
Yeah. So, just for my edification, since I'm still almost a rookie at this, what's the difference between CM, M1, and M2? Is there really that much difference?
You know, when you get right down to it, the M2 is the most intensive of the zoning districts, allows the really heavy kinds of industrial uses. M2 is considered light manufacturing, a little less intensive uses are allowed, but they're still fairly, they're still fairly intensive. The CM are starting into their commercial kinds of uses, so that's really the only, really the difference between them. They're still the heaviest of our.
So, just given the nature of the property, it's really an industrial area, and nobody's gonna come put seat commercial type stuff in this area anyway?
No, not at this location, there's no access to freeways or anything like that, so it just makes sense.
Any other questions for staff? Excellent, thank you. This was agenda as a public hearing, so I'll open up this item to the public, if there's anybody who would like to comment on it, I would invite you to the microphone, if you would kindly give us your contact information, and you'll have three minutes to make your comments. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring you back to commission. Commissioner Skoski.
Well, based on the findings set forth in the staff report, upon evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to the City Council to rezon the property located in approximately 5650 West Old Bingham Highway, from a CM-heavy commercial zone to an M1-light industrial zone district.
Motion by Commissioner Skoski, second by Commissioner Quinney, any discussion to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Which brings us to the last item on our agenda tonight, which is the view at 5600. Council asked us to review the density buy-ups based on their two meetings of discussions, which brings us back to today. So we'll turn it over to Larry for a little bit of background information on that, where we stand today, and then maybe we can just jump through these one at a time and review the pros and cons.
Okay, so the planning commission approved this last September, I believe, and it went forward to the council for ratification, and October, I don't have exactly, I think it was the first meeting in October, they tabled it at that meeting, and then it went on to December 2nd, City Council meeting, where the meeting, that meeting, they chose to rearman the development plan density buy-ups back to the planning commission for further review. Now with the original, or with the approval in September by the planning commission, the planning commission in the West Side Planning Area, which encompasses the Highlands, has the authority to approve the subdivision site plan and development plan. The council's action at their level is just to ratify the density buy-ups that the planning commission has already approved. So, in the WSPA, the way the ordinance was crafted, excuse me, was for 99% of the approval authority to be with the planning commission or the planning body of the city, and not so much with the City Council. However, they do have ratification on the density buy-ups, and as the planning commission's aware, there is a base density, and if you turn to your staff report to the last page, where I discuss, I think good enough is, I'm sorry to put page numbers out of this, but right before, staff recommendations, anyway, the calculation is, the base density is 4.1 in the MFR zone, which is a small portion of the View Development, on the south side of Clay Hollow Wash, and then the bulk of the, that's six acres, and then the rest of the development is in an HFR zone, a West Side Planning Area zone, which is a high-density zone, and that has a base density of nine units a acre, and it could be all the way up to 18 units maximum. And so there's a range there, that is, the ordinance allows certain amenities to be installed that would make a more desirable project, or something that the city would want in exchange for density. And, so the City Council sent back feeling that I was not giving a lot of direction at the council, so we'll just basically go through and review what the amenities are as you've asked me to do. The applicants are here, if you have any questions of them, I realize this is not a public hearing, and so I'm not really gonna focus so much on the PowerPoint tonight, but on your staff report and development plan, because I think it's a little more clear. Well, it's gonna be a little unwieldy to go through, but we'll go through it point by point. Now, in the WSPA, there's required amenities and amenities for buy-ups. I won't go through the required amenities, because the staff, I believe, they've met all of those, and they really don't add to the density, but I believe they've met all the required points, and so I'll just quickly get into the amenities for buy-up. If you turn to Table 2.0 in your staff report, there's several amenities listed, and the easiest way to do this would probably, if you need a picture, if you want look at pictures, to turn to Page 53, every development plan, which the applicant has provided a very good detail of what they're providing. And, so, and I wanna add that there's a maximum of 22 points in the Trails and Open Space category, and the applicant has provided, from my estimation, 27 points, or 27 percentage points. Now, as you can see at the, and, see if I can, maybe this will be easier, the swimming pool and the lazy river are right here. Now, as staff, I have given them two percentage points for this pool, and 1% for the lazy river. I don't see a lot of multifamily developments with lazy rivers, that's generally left to more municipal-type functions, or gyms, that type of thing. And so I felt that as a 1% percentage buy-up, that that was, I believe, accurate, in my estimation. Two basketball courts, there is one down here, and, and this is gonna be unwieldy, but there is one in this area closer to Mount View Court, where I think you can see where my green pointer is.
Yeah.
Now, there was some discussion that, well, it says basketball court, so we should only give them a percentage point for the basketball court. Well, logically, when I think of that, well, I guess you can take that stand, but then you only get one basketball court, because what's the incentive for someone to put in more than one if they're only getting, you know, one? I think it creates a much better development on all of these, if they're given percentage points for each of the top lots, playgrounds, basketball courts that they're willing to put in. I think on a development over 35 acres, if they're going to be given 2% for, you're only gonna give 2% for one basketball court, then I, as a developer, would put one basketball court in, if I'm not going to, you know, that's just the nature of the ordinance, that's the way it's written, is it a problem? I don't know, but, you know, logically, that's the way we have addressed it in other areas of the WSPA. In the Mount View View area, we've given, you know, multiple percentage points for additional items. So the fitness center, excuse me, I'll go back. Fitness Center is right here, and it's inside the clubhouse, three playgrounds with equipment, and that might be best looked at if you turn to item number seven on your staff report, where it shows playgrounds and top lot locations, and you can see they're spread out pretty well around the development, and not just clustered in one area. The forecourt with seating, the forecourt is on number eight, right below that, is right next to the common area, that's a place where, of course, people can sit and watch their children play, or have, you know, some type of area for people to associate.
What was the percentage on that one?
The forecourt with seating is 2%.
And then the fitness center was how much?
Fitness Center is 2% also. The parkour course is this amenity right here, it's at the extreme northwest portion of the development, and it's inside of this active open space area with walking trails, you can see these are different parkour monuments that people parkour on.
(laughing)
You know, I guess, the way I look at it, the shape I'm in, that would just be instant death, and so, anyway, that is what they've been given percentage points for. Now that, that is, you know, not specifically listed, but in the WSPA ordinance, there is something where if it is a like enough amenity, you know, then it can be granted percentage points by ordinance, it's up to the discretion of the planning commission whether they want to grant, you know, percentage points for a parkour course, you know, because some of these things are not, you know, the ordinance with the list of all things was, obviously wasn't meant to be all-inclusive because of that paragraph. Go ahead.
You said, if it's a like enough, is that what you said?
Yeah, if it's a like.
Like a playground or another little.
Yeah.
Park, any other kind of?
Yeah. Okay. Is it something different? Is it something that's gonna set this development apart? Is it something that's gonna add to the development? You know? Now, multiple playing fields, again, that was on, in the staff report, I highlighted that on image number 11, and the multiple playing fields that I chose to show on that are all in the Clay Hollow Wash area, which is right here. However, there are playing fields in this common area, as I pointed, you know, and I think there's a playing field associated with that, but the ones I highlighted are the ones in the Clay Hollow Wash. Now, picnic area is, the picnic area is adjacent to the pool clubhouse, common greens, the common green is, again, on image eight, the common green is right between the forecourt Landscape buffers, now the one, let's see if I can, the landscape buffer is adjacent to this trail area that was said as a trail, and so it will buffer these buildings from the common green and the area, the active playing areas in the Wash, that will be piped and will be landscaped and maintained by the developer. The landscape tree colonnade is this area, let's see if I can. I apologize for this, but, anyway, if you, I have an image in your staff report of that. It's the tree in image 12, that shows the tree colonnade, and simply a tree colonnade is an area where people can, you know, walk through, it's a nice landscape area, it has common, you know, trees placed in a symmetrical pattern, or a pattern that is, you know, pleasingly light, you see a lot of this done at today's great development. And so that's it for that, Trails and Open Space amenities. Now, as I've said, from my estimations, they have installed 27% worth of buy-ups, but they can only go up to 22%. Are there any questions at this point from the planning commission?
So, one of the questions that I pulled out of the City Council minutes was that, it seemed like they were counting some of these as duplicates. If I take a literal reading of the code, it said, "The table below shall be used to determine the value of each installed amenity within a development." And it says.
So literally, that means for each amenity?
Well, so that's how I'm reading it.
That's the way I read it.
So it says "top lot 1," not "top lots 1," so I don't know how literal we wanna take the code in making this math.
For each installed amenity.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm just throwing that out there for discussion.
Is it possible to bring up that ordinance in front of us, so we can see that? (laughing)
Not even by supervision.
Just pulling the WSPA ordinance on there, I don't know if you can.
His, his, his chair.
Yeah. Why don't you revoke your appointment, Chair, because of that?
I'll be Dave in person.
You know, and the point I wanna make is that, when we were working with Greg McElloch, he was the zoning administrator at that time, that's the interpretation he made of the ordinance, is it was for each amenity.
Commissioner Skoski?
I think that makes a lot of sense to me, that each, each item that's placed in is counted on its own, and my reasoning for that is that, you know, we don't look at our city as a whole and say, you know, we have a park, we have many parks throughout our city, and it costs our city a lot of money to maintain those parks, and we look at them as individual installs. I feel like it's, it would be kind of, I guess, hypocritical of us to look at a developer's land and say that, you know, two different basketball courts in two different areas are basketball court, you know, I mean, it costs the developer money to put those installations in, and I'm not downplaying that they're gonna make money back from that, because that's, otherwise they wouldn't be in business, but, but the fact that, that there are two should be counted as two, and that's just my opinion.
Commissioner, great.
I can kind of, and I agree with what you're saying, but I also can see the council's point when they said, I mean, if you go to a park, for example, and you go over to West Orange City Park, how many tennis courts are normally put together? You know, most of the time, you have one or two, that are, you know, you have a couple of courts put together, so I can also see where the council's coming from and saying, hey, wait a minute, two basket, if you decided to put 22 basketball courts around the, and this'll sound ludicrous, but if you decided to put 22 basketball courts around the perimeter of my complex, I've met the buy-out requirement, and I can do whatever I want. So I can see, you know, I can see where, I can see where the council's coming from, saying, you know, when you look at like the forecourts with the seating and the common green, what's the difference between that and, you know, a couple of the other open spaces, or what's the difference between the common green and a playing field that are both pieces of grass? So I can understand where the council's coming from, but I also understand that it says "each amenity." And so, you know, the difficulty is, what's the balance there to say, all right, do we say each top lot? Cause you, so, to just take that analogy, if we were gonna put a thousand-square-foot top lot, but we split it up into two 500-square-foot pieces, does that mean we get the two buy-ups, where one, a thousand-square-foot would, both of them are the same cost, but I get an extra buy-up because I split it in two?
But you also get more utility, depending on where they're placed.
You do get more utility where they're placed, but, but I can see where the council's coming from with that, what they're, you know, with what they're saying is, okay, are we, are we taking one amenity, splitting it in two, so that we can get extra, you know, we can get an extra buy-up? Am I off-point there, Judy, with what I saw with the council?
No, I think they felt like, and as I read this, you know, it says playground, three top lots with swing sets. So they're not looking at three top lots, which are different, they're looking at three that are the same, it's not telling us anything other than swing sets. And so we're giving them extra points for exactly the same thing. The basketball courts, I agree with, I was, I agree, they should have, each have their own point system. The top lots, we were in disagreement with, we were in disagreement with the lazy river, you know, and everybody has a different view of this, we felt like it was part of the swimming pool.
Well, but then in reality, if you deduct those two, then it still isn't breaking down to the 22, but.
And, and then the other thing was, that bothered them, was the buffering along 5600 West. There's no buffering, that is a large highway.
Now, there is buffering along 56, and I'll show that too.
Yes, you could, because it isn't shown on the map.
Let's take those, we'll take those ones.
Well, let's go through the rest of the optionals, so they.
Hang on, so even looking at these buy-up numbers, what's the discretionary mark to say that the swimming pool is one point or two?
It's in the ordinance, and.
It says up to two.
Yeah, up to two.
But what would make that a one percentage point?
The lazy river or the swimming pool?
No, if you were to look at the swimming pool and say, no, this swimming pool is 1%, this one is 2%.
I don't know, I think that's the issue with the ordinance, and when I look at an ordinance, if an applicant's put a swimming pool in, then I will give them the 2%, because I think it's a swimming pool that's sufficient size for this development.
And it says basketball court singular is up to 2%, top lot singular is up to 1%. Totlot singular is up to 1%. So, I don't know. But yeah, so even if we take out some of the contentious items, if we remove the lazy river, if we take the totlots down to 1%. And then the only other one that exceeded the maximum allowable, and then we can argue that each installed portion of it, the playing fields at 4%, but even if we were to knock that down to 2%, that still leaves us at 23% total buyup.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you know, I'd, I'd hesitate to cut off your nose to spite your face because, you know, uh, do, do you want all these amenities installed or do you want one totlot with 500 units? Or do you want four as a proposal? You know, I don't think they're asking because it's not going to affect anything.
I was just wondering, i- if, is it the, the, the off, the one that's the trail and the open spaces that we went up to the 22%? Is that the one that was the most contentious?
That's the only one I heard anything on and then...
I mean, I, yeah, I didn't hear anything on, but I don't think anybody complained about the enhanced doors or the equal dispersion or anything like that. So, or the monuments. Did you hear anything like that?
But there, there was a, at the October meeting, there was a, a comment uh, during the public hearing that no one should be given extra credit for monuments. But that was an opinion. Only it wasn't the council's, a person from the audience or one of the general public that made that statement. However, it's something that's specifically listed in the ordinance. And so the applicant has chosen to do that. And that's what all of the developments in the Highlands have done is chosen to identify themselves as part of the Highlands and so. And the only assumption I can make is that when the council, planning commission and staff years ago approved this Highlands Development WSP, that was very important to them that they be identified where they were at. You know, as opposed to like Jordan Hills villages where nobody really knows that it's part of a master plan, uh, community.
So what I was wondering is, is that if, if most of the contention that we're talking about is the, the optional stuff with the swimming pool and everything, I'm wondering if we just don't go through one of those, e- each, each one of those,
might not need.
Come, come up with the number and see where, what, what we agree with the number based on what, the way we read the ordinance and everything, and see what we come up with at the end? And if it, if it's still above the 22%, then we've made that finding. If it's lower than the 22%, I mean, maybe that, you know, there has to be a minor adjustment in the plan, but we come up with that number to satisfy the council's requirement.
Commissioner Skosky?
Yes, thank you. The wash, um, is kind of a contentious thing at the city council due to the fact that if they're going to use this as open space, trail, whatever, it would have to be piped. That would be a requirement. They couldn't leave it open. It's too dangerous. And yet we're giving them points for something that they would have to do.
No, they do not have to pipe that wash. That is something they are suggesting to do. In fact, we went through this for six months with the engineering department who did not want it piped. And we had to go through a lot of engineering analysis to get them to agree on the piping of the wash. And so it's not a safety issue as to, for the view to pipe it. They just think it makes a much, much better development. The staff agrees that it makes a much, much better development because it's a landscaped area rather than the washes that we normally have in that part of the, uh, uh, you know, part of the city. Because there's a lot of them that, you know, just go basically 50 feet from the, the center line of the wash and on each side. And that's good and then it's nothing maintained, it's natural grasses and that, you know, and you can call those whatever you want to call them. Uh, but what the view is proposing to do is wash this and actually use it as an active, uh, active open area. Now, it will still meet the requirements of the floodplain that, uh, it's below a large retention area, a large city-owned retention area. And so, but it would have designed in a way that if, uh, for some reason that retention area were to, uh, be compromised, the water could still flow through there safely without damage to life and living property hopefully, unless they ride in the wash, so.
But without it being piped, it is a safety issue for the view. If they're going to use it as part of their open space.
Well, how do you, what do you mean?
As you just said, if there's water running through that and you've got someone down in it.
If, if that's, if, that's if the, only if the detention pond above it to the, the west becomes compromised.
But that is something that we did look at, something that...
Yeah, oh yeah. Our engineering department, what we spent six months looking at this, you know, uh, different type of analysis, um, you know. And so it has been looked at and the piping, you know, finally, uh, it came to the point where they could pipe the wash and install landscaping, which I think makes it much, much better development because it's a landscaped area. It's an open area with a trail, you know, walking along a landscaped area rather than along the natural grasses and cobbles and garbage bags and whatever else flows into it. Which, which the city will have, no, we won't be able to maintain any of this. This developer will be doing this.
Will it be the developer HOA?
Uh, it'll be done through development agreement. This is all a, this is all a private for rent product, so there won't be an HOA involved in this.
Thank you.
And then I just want to get, the buffer that Judy was talking about along 5600 West, the set, the required setback of the buildings in this zone are only 20 feet. Uh, the applicant is putting in a bermed buffer. And this is the buffer that I believe is causing, uh, the confusion. Is a landscape buffer that has approximately three to four foot berm and it's landscaped with trees and, and grasses up next to 5600 West. So that is the buffer that they received buyup points for.
So, Commissioner, can I ask? So I'm looking at the, the 13 and the 14 about the, the active open space and the dedication of additional property along the trails. So I guess my question on those two is the same, looking at the map, they look like they're the identical piece of property. And, and so the question I have is, okay, we installed the benches and the track, the trash receptacles every thousand feet. We, we give them 5% for active open space, but then we're saying, okay, it's also the same space along the wash or filling it up. That's another 15% or another...
No, no, the 15% is, let me back up to, because by ordinance, this wash runs approximately through here.
Okay.
They would only be required to put 100 feet through there, no more.
And how much are they putting there?
Now, you can see it varies and that, that's, and the reason it varies is it, it, um, we've allowed that in other developments in the Lowenview or in the Highlands master plan. So you can see at this point, they've dedicated much more, 290 some feet or it's 113 feet at this point, 117, 136, 152. And so I, I think with one of my other staff reports, it was, it's about 160 feet.
Okay.
So they've dedicated more, you know, about 60 feet. And also what they're doing is choosing to landscape this and buffer it. So it's just not like this guy walked out and he walked right into the, the wash and it would be nicely landscaped along this area.
So let me ask you the question and there's a couple of these for the playing fields then as well.
Yes.
So what's the difference of having that? Like, cause it says, cause it's the installation of landscaping and irrigation along the trail corridor. That's, that's one of the issues. So if this is landscaped and it's 136 feet, are we doubling the points because we're putting a playing field in the landscape part that's the extension of the trail?
They don't have to put a playing field in there if you're not going to give them points. They can just landscape it.
But what's the diff, what, I mean, what's the difference in the landscaping between a playing field and putting grass in there?
Um, well, I think a, a playing field is probably more leveled out.
Okay.
To where it can be used, kids can kick it. You know, I'm not saying these are soccer field size because they're not. Um, but I think they're leveled out and usable open space is what the ordinance says. Otherwise, if, if they're not going to put a playing field in, it could just be left rough and hilly and they could just put grass in there and...
Or they could just throw some sort of seed.
Yeah.
Or they could put...
Put big trees in there or whatever, but they're choosing to use, put playing fields in there. And that's kind of in conjunction with, uh, the approved trail corridor. And, and the developers of the view have been really excited about this trail coming through this project. And it won't be a private trail, it'll be a public trail. They're even allowing, uh, the general public to make use of this entire area and so.
And then I, I'm, I'm going to ask one last question and maybe then we can figure out how we want to go through this. But the park or course, why would that be any different than any other trail? So, so, cause I've been, I've, I've been to hundreds of places across the country, army bases in particular. You have a trail and you have, you have little stations along the trail. Why, what would make the park or course different than a trail with just some exercise stops along the trail that really aren't that much different?
Um, you know, that's a good point. I think it is, it's something different in your development plan. He, the applicant did show, you know, it really is, you know, they're larger blocks. You know, things can, people can jump off and jump between, you know. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you're probably talking about, uh, the thing we have over here at Veterans Park where there's a place where people can do knee ups. And I think they'll also have that along the trail too, their trail area too, along with the park or. But I think the park or certainly won't be for everyone. You know, it will be more for the young and young at heart and potential chiropractor patients.
What I was going to ask is, are you going to set up a chiropractic office just outside that on the perimeter? That gets a different story. Where the peak surgeons and staff in the clubhouse.
And the code allows for those, those amenities that are not listed in the table to be considered as needed there. Commissioner Hyer, do you have something? Commissioner Skosky?
I was just going to add, uh, that, you know, I, I see these park or videos all the time. People post them on, online and they're funny to watch because it's always kids smacking into stuff when they didn't quite make the leap, you know, wherever. But, but the one thing that I've noticed is it's almost always at like a kid's playground where they're, really shouldn't probably be jumping from one structure to another with kids playing around that, you know, these older kids doing this kind of stuff. So I kind of like, I kind of like that they're, they're building an area that kind of accommodates this, this new sport that we don't understand. I mean, for my generation, it was skateboarding. Yeah, I couldn't skateboard anywhere. There were signs that said, "No skateboarding everywhere." But there was no accommodation made for skateboarders until we finally got wise and started putting in skate parks. And now you don't have that problem. So something like this, I think is a great idea because you're going to, you, you're taking the people that want to go bust themselves up and you're giving them an area to do it so that they're not endangering kids and, you know. It just provides a place.
Commissioner Hyer?
I just wanted to say with these amenities that they brought in the lazy river, give it a 1% or whatever, 0%. It's, it's still the same. Uh, it's something new and, and the park or course is, is cutting edge. And, and, uh, with a project this size, they're going to need to keep things, uh, top shelf, if you will, and, and done right in order to get the, uh, renters in there that they're, that they're going to be marketing for. Now, they've gone the extra mile with, with some of the, uh, buyups and, and whether we gave them, uh, points for some of them, I, I have to think that they're going to do them anyway just because, uh, from a marketing standpoint and, and, uh, from a success, making the project a total success. So I, I, I like the project from that standpoint for sure.
So do we need to hammer through this list?
Yeah, I think that for the council's sake, I think we need to go through at least the optional ones. And, and, and maybe the, the ones that we talked, that Larry talked about here a second ago with the trail. And, and, you know, and, and I think we need to at least put on the record and what we think, if we end up approving this in specific, for lack of a better term, some specific findings to say, hey, here's the reason why we decided that we want the playing field included as extra points along the trail that's been filled in because they don't have the land, you know, because it includes better grading or whatever. I think we need to put some of that stuff on the record for the city council. So I agree, I think we ought to go through each one of these, uh, one at a time. And if we want to change the percentages, the, we, we do that and we come up with a percentage. Cause I think that's the ones that are the most contentious is a couple of those, the playing fields and the optional stuff. That's just me, so I, I agree. I think we ought to go through them and just talk about it.
So let's start with that. Let's look at the pool and the lazy river. So the, the question from council is whether those should be included as one or separate. Commissioner Skosky?
All right, maybe it's a builder perspective, but you can put a swimming pool in and they're going to give you credit for that. I know that, you know, in a lot of our facilities, uh, a lot of municipal facilities, they have a, a lazy river attached to the pool. And yes, there's water flowing through it, but it's, I mean, from the builder perspective, that's an add-on. That's an addition. And there's a lot of value that's put into adding that second unit. A lot of different equipment goes into that, the jets that blow the water around and stuff. And it's, it's a completely different system. So I would, I would say that that is a separate entity from the swimming pool and I would award, uh, more percentage for the lazy river.
Commissioner Hyer? Sorry. Commissioner, back.
Oh, thanks very much. Yeah, I would agree with Commissioner Skosky in the sense that there's got to be some value attached to going the extra mile and putting that in there. If there's no, uh, value attached to that, other than as Commissioner Hyer mentioned, a, a marketing point to be able to obtain and retain residents, I, I think we'd be doing a disservice by not honoring that commitment to making a first-class project. And, and agree it's attached, that maybe it would be different if the lazy river were in one place and the, and the pool were in another. Um, a good point by, by Chairman Lawswear, looking at the code where it's up to 2% for a swimming pool. But in a way, that park isn't so much a swimming pool as a, as another amenity. Now, now would I go, you know, 4% times, you know, 2%? Probably not, but I think there should be some consideration, at least a percentage point there. Um, the same thing that was mentioned for the basketball courts. True, you've got a court, slice it in half, it's still a court, but now you've got two halves and if they're on opposite ends of a development, I mean, that really does make a difference because right now, even think about where this lazy river and pool are located, it's in one area. And, and let's say that I'm waiting clear on the other side. Now I've got a walk, it's not quite as convenient making that, that arduous trek. You know, it's not how far, but, but yeah, it's much more convenient if I can step right out and be right in there. So that, that's why I think I would personally give consideration to the swimming pool. And then when we do get to the, to the basketball court, just for the sake of comparison, I think there should be some consideration given to, to breaking that up into two separate locations, even though it is the same amount of cement as being poured and the same amount of basketball standards that are there.
Commissioner, great.
On this one, I, I think I tend to agree with, with everybody else is that this is, that the lazy river, I mean, if we, if, based on the ordinance that you read, that it, it, it's for each amenity, even though it's attached, I tend to think that if they put a swimming pool on one side, a swimming pool on the other side, we'd probably give them credit for that because there are two separate swimming pools. If this were a swimming pool and a hot tub, like you go to a hotel, I'd probably say, no, they're the same thing. Because adding a hot tub to a swimming pool costs you an extra, you know, a few bucks and that's not a big investment. But given the land that it takes here, I, I, I tend to, I tend to lean the same way that I would call the lazy river a separate amenity. I wouldn't go the 2% and say it's an extra swimming pool because we can go up to the 2%. I think that you've got a, you've got a good-sized swimming pool plus that extra, uh, you know, that, that extra... Uh you know, that that extra amenity I, at the lazy river, I think I, I think I agree that I'd go with one percent there too.
Anybody opposed to granting one percent to the lazy river and two percent to the pool? Commissioner Hanson is opposed to that. Okay, keeping that in mind, uh let's, let's keep plugging along down the list. So two basketball courts were granted two percent by staff. Anybody not in favor of that?
I, I'm, I'm not sure I buy this one.
Okay?
Um. If you put both basketball courts together, and and the ordinance is tennis court. And 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 most people put two tennis courts, I mean, that's the obvious stuff. I'm not sure I'd go two percent for two basketball courts, I, I I might go one percent for two basketball courts just because. We're talking about. Piece of concrete and some, you know, a couple of basketball court, I I just don't see that as, as as buying up. That much density, you know, buy, as a density buy-up for dedicating another, I mean, I don't know what these sizes are, but the. If you're going to full-size high school basketball court, you're talking about five thousand square feet, uh you know, fifty by, you know. Fifty by a hundred roughly, I I'm not sure that I would buy that as a, as a full two percent, but that's my opinion.
I I disagree with that, and again, that's because um if I were gonna put two basketball courts side by side and I was gonna build them. I'd have all my equipment right there, I would grade the land, I'd compact the land, I'd put forms around the outside and I'd make one court. And it's put two basketball standards on each end and you got two courts, it's quick and it's easy. Where you've got two, you have separate land prep for both sites, you have to move equipment back and forth. You've got an additional site on each site that has to be formed and poured. Um there's, it's more complicated and uh and there's more expense there, even if you don't see it as being more expensive. It's, it's quite a bit more expensive for the builder to do that, so uh in my opinion, I think, I think they deserve the two percent.
Commissioner Hanson?
No.
Anybody else, I don't know if Commissioner Green opposed to the two percent for the basketball courts? Okay, I'm trying to run a little tally here to see where we end up at the end. Uh two percent for the fitness center, anybody opposed to that? Okay. Three playgrounds at two percent?
Pardon me?
Three playgrounds at two percent?
A piece?
Uh total.
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 Aren't we talking the top lots or?
These are just the playgrounds, top lots are next.
Okay.
Anybody opposed to that? Okay. Uh the three top lots for a total of two percent?
Nah, I don't think so. How, how big are these top lots, do we know?
Any idea? They'll be the same, top lots have.
You wanna fill up the microphone so we can catch that on the record? Give us your name real quick.
My name's Gardner Crane with you and Land Company. I'm gonna try to answer this question without sounding like a fool. Uh you've all seen in, in your city parks, the really huge top lots that are. Sixty thousand dollar uh systems. Uh they won't be that big, uh they'll, each of them will be about half to a third of that size. Does that, I don't know if that helps you, but they'll, their cost is about twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars ea- uh each. And so they're, they're about, they, one of them would fill this room wall, wall to wall. Does that, does that help?
One of them?
Yeah.
What would the amenities inside of that be?
I'd, I can't answer that intelligently, but you, 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 just the typical. Stuff that you, you know, modern equipment that you see in some of your newer parks, it's typically game time, commercial type equipment. Um and frankly, we haven't identified the exact kit in each location that we're going to use. Pending some of these discussions, but uh I hope that helps, is that helpful at all?
Sounds like it's like the same one right over here, just in the, in the Veterans Park over here, by the uh, by the rec center, the, my kids call it the squishy park.
Okay.
That, that's kinda what I'm imagining. It's right over by the blue squishy baseball fields over there too.
Yeah. I, I'm, I'm, I can't picture it myself, I'm sorry, but.
Yeah, it's just slides and little things that they climb with, it's not as, they're like three to four swings. It's not.
Yeah, there's, there's typically a couple of, couple of slides.
Yeah, it's mostly just.
A set of monkey bars.
Merry-go-round.
Spot with the steering wheel on it, stuff like that, but, but about the size of this room.
Thanks for the context.
I hope that helps.
Yes, thanks. So with that in mind, two percent for your top lots?
I agree.
I'm okay with that.
Anybody else in disagreement? Two percent for one percent?
I think I'm gonna lean with one percent there.
Okay. Uh the four courts, two percent. No opposition to that, uh the park or?
Actually, there was the common green in there that's one percent.
Uh that's farther down.
Separate item.
Separate item, we'll go to separate.
Oh, you're going down that list.
Oh, sorry, yeah, that's on that list.
Okay.
That's how I wrote it out first. Uh so the park or course for two percent? Anybody in disagreement on that? Okay. Uh so the playing fields were four percent. I think this came up in relation to another item, but which we'll get to in a minute, but. Any, have, anybody have strong feelings on, on the playing fields?
Uh I would personally, two percent, none of them for.
Okay.
I, I would just question why we're giving four for, there are five playing fields, so why are we giving four percent for five? What, what is that rationale? Why would it be five for five or two for five?
I would, I would have to defer to staff on that one as to, to why that ended up at four percent.
Probably because of shared number, one, two, three, four, and it says playing field up to two percent, four, one.
So each playing field could be, it's hard up to two percent?
If you take a literal reading of the.
Give up to ten percent for this?
Yeah, they've chosen for four.
Just to clarify, these fields are maintained by the community, they're not maintained by the city, right?
Yes, maintained, yes, they're not, no, they won't be city maintained, I don't know.
I, I could see doing four percent at least, just because of down the line, me.
Their playing fields, we haven't even identified them as soccer fields or baseball fields, I, two percent seems more than enough for me.
For all five of them?
Yeah.
Anybody else have an opinion on those ones?
I think I tend to lean with map there. Commissioner Queen, I think I tend to lean that four percent, four percent there may be generous, given where they're located, but.
And they're all squished together in the same area, I guess if they were distributed, it might make a difference in my opinion, but we got five of them right next to each other, so.
Yeah.
But we're also talking about though, it's landscaped, it's not just a field of grass, right? I mean, like this, it's sawed at least, so there's, there's systems that have to go in place to maintain those. And that's all coming out of their cost, we're not.
Right, right, I, but when you look at, my, my thought is along with this, is that when you look at the, the five playing fields. Two of them are, two of them are toe-to-toe, the, the other, the two, two, you know, the two at the far.
Eastern end there.
Yeah, eastern end, it's one p, I mean, literally, there's a division of a few feet between two playing fields. With, you know, and on the, on the far west end, the division between the field that runs north and south and. Uh northeast, northwest is, is almost nothing, but they almost, to me, they're, they're really the same piece, in my mind, they're the same piece of grass. You could stretch the, the, the third one in here, but I, I think two percent there would be. I think that, that's, I think that's easier to call two percent, I, I, so I agree with you.
About, about three percent.
Two, you're two point five.
Two point five, you're two point seven five.
Well, what about the, over by the basketball court, there's a. What's that, is that another?
By the basketball court, that's a playground, you're talking about the far west end, that's just a playground.
Just immediately to the west of the basketball court?
Yes. Is that, it's marked the same as the other five, so would that make a six?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, you're talking about the one down on the far south end?
Yeah.
That's true.
Okay, for any interest of time, I'll write down that we're somewhere around two to three percent consensus.
Because of that.
Wait, I'll, we'll, Commissioner back?
The, the question I had is because we've, we've got the approximate size of this room on a top lot, what, what is the approximate size that we're talking about here? Cuz true, they're close by each other, but they're still the same amount of size, or they're close by each other, what type of? Area are we talking about? Cuz that does make a difference how big they are, as Commissioner Skoski mentioned, you, you've got irrigation systems, you've got to mow it, you've gotta maintain it.
So they're probably uh fifty feet wide, uh than the larger ones are. Cuz this whole stretch is about eight hundred feet along here, so fifty by a hundred.
The one down, the one on the south end is probably, looks like it's about twenty or thirty feet wide, if it's forty, fifty feet wide compared to the basketball court.
Yeah. Commissioner Green?
Okay, so I'm gonna, I wanna speak two thoughts here, one. We can go back to the argument we have with the basketball court and the proximity, we're not moving the equipment all over the place to, to put these in, we're just, just straight down, right? The other, the other argument I would make on this is, you're talking about needing to provide care, mowing and maintenance and whatnot. But this is also an open space, right, it's still gonna need to be careful, right, now let the area around the playing fields, just for a while. Uh it's still gonna be cared for, it's still all gonna be watered, so is it really that much extra care to have to do because it's considered a playing field and this is more level than. The area adjacent to it, I mean, I, I think, I think I could. Look at like a half a percent, half a percent for each one, we got six of them, that's three percent, I could be, I could be comfortable with six percent or with three percent.
Three percent?
With three percent. There's six fields, half a percent probably.
Any other feelings on that?
I can go with three.
I think I could buy that.
Um.
I saw Josh give us.
Chairman Lawswear? Yeah, it might be helpful if I explained something due to the fact that when we seen this, and send it back to you guys.
Please.
Is we all visited with these developers in the very beginning, that there was no talk of buy-ups. We saw the original thing without any talk of buy-ups. The first time we saw buy-ups was when you sent it to us. So we were kind of in shock as to, gee, this isn't what we presented, as they talked to each one of us individually. You know, this isn't what we were expecting, and I think that was a shock value, to see all of a sudden they're asking for this many more units. But we haven't discussed with them or talked with them or talked about any buy-ups.
Do you have a discussion?
So, well, now hold on.
We discussed the original.
Was that out of context or was that in a public meeting where that discussion took?
That was out of context.
Okay, and so we need to be careful that we discuss what is on the agenda.
They, they got it, that's what they discussed.
So we can only work with what we were given.
That's right.
At the time.
That's right.
And what we're looking at tonight.
And that's what we were doing when it was given back to us, of working with what we were given, which I no longer do, so.
Okay. Uh continuing down the list. Did you have some more insight for us on one of the items we currently just? All right, understood, understood. All right, two percent for the, the picnic stuff. Wanna post it up? Okay, uh common greens was one percent.
See, now. My question, if we're talking about common green, what's the difference between a common green and a playing field? And so I tend to think that that common green, given where it's at, between the buildings. And and I, and I'm gonna stretch this into that, that courtyard as well. They're just in the middle, they're dead space in the middle of the buildings that we're trying to get extra credit for by putting grass in between the buildings. So I'm not a fan of the one percent for the, for the common green, particularly when you've got four courts on both sides of them that we're already counting. And it's just a grass piece in between them, that's, that's my thought.
But my concern is, is that the ordinance specifically lists common green and the applicant has installed a common green.
What's, what, so, uh let me ask you this question, so giving, given the standard definition of what a common green is. In a town, let, let's say, given a tipi, you know, you, you go to a northeastern town where they have the town green. What makes, what makes this a town green, other than in fact, given a piece of grass, the name that says common green?
Well, I think that's up to the developer's design, that's what he's designed for his project, now he could have not put anything in there.
Well, but if he doesn't put anything in there, what's he gonna put in there, he's gotta, he's gotta maintain that, so it's either concrete or grass.
Yeah, but it's a place, you know, the playing fields down in the wash. Area, I think, will be pretty active spaces. Where someone with younger children and older adults may not be comfortable, I think this gives. Sets apart that area and maybe for somebody, it's a little calmer, that's, that's what I look at.
I can see where, I see where you're going with that, but I, I mean, we've drawn, i- if you just follow my logic through. This, you've got the four courts on both sides and we've drawn it, we've drawn a piece of, we've drawn a line around a piece of grass saying that's com- common green.
I can tell you the difference.
What's that?
I can tell you the difference.
Come.
If you look at where the common green is on, on the development area, it's backed by houses or building units, so. The intention is to be able to walk directly out of your unit and have kind of a backyard area where you can just be right outside your unit. Whereas the playing fields, you have to make, it's a destination, you have to walk to that, so, just hearing out. So the, the intended use is, so for, a common green is more designated for like elderly. And things like that where you're not necessarily gonna have a big soccer game going on there or something.
Okay, I, 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 I understand that completely, but the question is, is that if I took, if we take that square off and don't say it's common green. It's still gonna be a piece of grass there and.
Maybe it might be rocks.
It might be rocks.
Right.
Okay, but if it's, if it's rocks, it's still a landscaped area and it's still part of the open space.
It'll cost to maintain it.
I just, I just have a hard time with calling a, a piece of grass in, in, in the middle of. A, a bunch of, for lack of a better term, apartment, apartments, I just have a hard, we, we've already got things on the end and this is just a continuation of the four courts. I have a hard time giving, giving them one percent for the common green, I really do.
Commissioner Queen?
Yeah, and I would argue the other direction, I think this is more dedicated for the more mature the grownups. I mean, you can see there, there's no credit for this given, but that little area just off to the side is a putting green.
Yeah.
Right, this is gonna be a little bit, an area where you can have a slightly more mature um group of people that are coming over there as opposed to. The common greens, where the kids are gonna be running crazy around the, the park, the, the top lots. I would, I would be, we're not giving any credit for a putting green, so I think that this is kinda how we kinda lump this in here is. Giving them credit for, this is a very different space than what the other spaces we've talked about.
And it's intended use changes through design, I think that's the answer, is. You can look at the design layout over on the right and, and the design layout over where the common green is, they're very different. There's, there's uh walkways that are put in there and breaking up the space, making it intentionally. So that you don't have a soccer game, I mean, it's intended to be an area to stroll rather than, you know, than an inten- intended to be an area where you play.
And within this development, it's really the only area that's set apart from buildings in the whole middle, but everything else we've discussed is on, kind of on the periphery of this whole entire development. It's the only thing that's kinda right in the heart of it, so.
So I will buy your argument if, so lead me, I'm gonna lead you down to the.
We're not going back.
To, no, I'm gonna lead you down to the next court, to the next one that's the courtyard, if you look at the picture, the courtyard encompasses the four courts, the court green and the putting green. So from my, from my standpoint, either we give the credit for the courtyard or we give them the credit for the. from my s- from my standpoint, either we give the credit for the courtyard, or we give them the credit for the common green, but we can't do both, cause they're all the same thing. I, I mean, if you look at that picture in number nine of the courtyard, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna drop down just one, the picture of the courtyard shows that courtyard space, which we've already given them credit for the four courts that are in there, and we're giving them credit for the green, we can't give them credit for a courtyard just because they added the putting green to it now. So the, 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 there's my logic is, either we, either, we get, we do one of the two there, I don't think we can do looking at this really hard, looking at the pitch, I don't think we can do both there. Cause the courtyard and the court and the common green are the same area, and so are the four courts, so.
I, I could go with that.
I, so I can, I can buy, I'll, I'll buy the one percent for the, for the common green if we drop the one percent for the courtyard.
Yeah.
I'm not opposed to that either, but it begs the question, if we put the top lot on top of it, do we still get credit for both?
I don't know. I, it, just, just given, just given the way it's diagrammed out, I think that it, it, it appears that it's trying to get double credit for different things.
I'm not opposed to that, I think that's sound logic, anybody else differ on that?
I, I also, I mean, if you look down farther, and we'll get to it, but the tree colonnade is also in that courtyard circle, and, and that's at two percent, so I, I agree, I think
Okay.
One or the other.
So if we drop the courtyard, then it, it makes it easier for a couple of these other things.
Uh, okay, so then the landscape buffers, we're giving two percent, anybody?
That's the landscape buffer along fifty sixth, right?
No, that's along the wash.
That's the long one, along the wash.
Of the buildings along the wash. This general area along here will be a different type of landscaping that is intended to buffer these buildings from the wash area.
I, I support that, because we're also, they're also generously allowing public access through that trail system there, which could make that a very busy area, so the
Gives a little privacy.
Buildup gives privacy to whoever.
If it's the right land, uh, uh, if we're talking about the right landscaping there, I think I'd agree with that, if we're talking about just putting grass in there and making it an extension of the playing field, I wouldn't agree with that, so.
Now, there, there's a landscape plan at the back of here, about a private little cabinet.
We know what page that is.
There's several of them.
By the way, on the landscape plan, just in case this matters, in the landscape plan on L one oh six, the area that we're calling common green is actually listed as grass volleyball. And the community green on the landscape is the two four courts we're seeing. That's, that's page ninety nine.
It's partially in L one oh four, which is page ninety five, and it's partially in it's like uh.
Well, at least you get the idea of what they go along there.
These, these are the trees that Josh described at the beginning of that section, right?
Yeah, trees, shrubs, a sidewalk border.
So, let me ask you this question, and I'm just gonna, I, uh, we, I know we just talked about the this, but we're on that, we're in that area. The playing fields on L one oh four are called active open space, and then, as, and we've given them credit for the playing fields, but then as you get to one of these other, one of the other criteria, there's a criteria, let me find it. There's, there's a criteria for active open space, so is it a playing field or is it a a- active open space, or are we just using different names for pieces of property to get extra buyout? Now that I'm looking at this landscape plan.
For which section are you looking at?
Um, which section was it?
That had the active open space. L one oh four, I believe, had some of it.
Hold on, use the second.
Yeah, but you're on active open space, active open space, but, but it seems to me that in one of these criteria.
Well, I referred to amenity map, because the landscape architect may have mislabeled some of this stuff. That's the reason I, I chose to use the amenity map.
Okay. Cause there was a criteria for active open space, I thought I saw.
Well, so that's the generic heading for all of the buyouts.
Okay, alright, then I'm good with that.
Okay.
And we got, we've got extra buffers and trees, I, I, I can probably buy the two percent there.
So then the last one, uh, from this list is the colonnade?
Colonade.
And that will be in this area, and I think that, from discussions with the applicant, they really want this to be a focal point into this portion of the development, so it's the reason they chose to put the extra landscaping and trees into that area, to make it more of a focal point along Winter Ranch Way.
I think given the intensity of landscaping there, the amount of trees and the amount of shrubbery and stuff, I would, I would say two percent.
Anybody opposed to two percent? So real quick math, we have a majority opinion for a total score of twenty five.
So Dan, so for my advocate, which ones did you reduce?
Uh, so we reduced the playing fields to three percent. And.
Eliminated courtyard.
Eliminated.
And we eliminated the courtyard.
That one.
The courtyard for one percent, okay.
So that still brings us to twenty five percent for that.
And they, they can only have twenty two percent.
See, that was the last one on there.
And so the most they could have is twenty two percent, so.
Huh, it's not in the, it's not in the listing, staff is like, oh, no, it is, oh, we did the four courts.
We have four courts with seating without seating on the seating.
So where is the?
Where is the four courts?
So that's not listed in the staff's buyup calculation. There's only the four courts with seating.
Yeah, I take that out, so.
Well, that's, this is twenty seven, isn't it?
So does it still equal twenty five now?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're still at twenty five percent for that. Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you, um. I wondered how, uh, the fencing adjacent to the public facility, how, what kind of fencing is present, or are they going to put up?
Along the wash?
I know, along the, uh, substation.
Oh, I.
The Rocky Mountain power substation.
Oh, um. I don't know, what was the fencing along Gardner? Are you looking that up? And that really wasn't a buyout amenity, it was a
No, I know it wasn't, I just wondered what type of fencing, if it's present or if they're installing it.
Uh, no, there's nothing there now, and so they will be installing. The only fencing present is along Mountain View corridor, and, well, then the, the where am I cursor is the power corridor, I believe, comes something like this. And so they're not gonna fence, the power lines will actually be over a lot of this area, running through where the, the power corridor course is and that. So, I think you're talking, I correct me if I'm wrong, Judy, to the north of that, I don't know if I have a good picture of that. Adjacent to the commercial property, that, that, that's something more, we, we generally get into a final approval. Um, because the ordinance does require, uh, between differing uses to have a substantial barrier, and so where it's adjacent to commercial, we may even require an iridescent rock or a precast concrete type wall.
Okay, is there, is there a wall there?
Oh yeah, there'll be something there.
Okay, thank you.
So are there any other of the, uh, the specific buyouts that we wanted to discuss?
I, I have a couple of, um.
Yeah.
Under, it, it's number thirteen on the, the, the staff picture report, and, and it goes back to something that, I don't know, it's, it's, it's irritating me, but it, it's, it's number thirteen, active open space, and it's also listed in the development report on page forty three, it says installation of active open space amenities accessible from trails. So, what concerns me is that if we look at the space that circled on the developer report, that's that active open space, five percent, we've already given credit for playing fields, we're giving credit for the, the landscape buffer, and they want five percent for the active open space, and so I'm leaning, and I, and I'm still looking at the numbers here, but if, if, you know, when you, when you talk about total buyout and everything, I have a concern with that one, and I also have a concern that it's, that it talks about, they got, they, they got a four percent buyout, or on their, in their report, of, they, they, they calculated a four percent buyout for installation of fencing along all trails and walkways, yet there's not gonna be fence along every trail in the, in the, in the project, because they're part of the open space. So, those are the other two that are probably sticking with me the most is we have playing fields, but we also wanna call it active open space, we have a landscape buffer that's, we also wanna call five percent active open space, and I can't buy that when I'm looking at this, at that detail. And I also have a hard time with the four percent saying we're installing fencing along all the trails when we're when we're not.
No, they will be destroying the three rail fence that's, that's typical in the, the view.
So there's gonna be a rail, a rail on each side of the fence?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so then I can, I, I can live with that, and then.
And, and, then let me interrupt your, my logic, um, approving the active open space and the playing fields. Now why, a playing field, I think, is set up more for people to be able to do things without es- be able to run, without necessarily getting injured with holes and that, uh, or unlevel ground, but the whole thing is still active area. And, but, the other point is, in the Highlands, we have a lot of these, these trails along washes that are more in a natural environment, uh, so to speak, which ends up being weeds for a long time, and until the natural grasses and vegetation, but the applicant is, is choosing to landscape this entire area and irrigate it. So I think that it's, it's a very, very acceptable trade in my mind, so.
Well, I, I like to also just say that, like, if you, I mean, if we look at, uh, item eleven, where it shows the multiple playing fields, if we were to block out just what that square footage is, and then we were to add up the additional square footage of that lighter shade, um, that's also active open space, or, or open space, I mean, it really would add up to a lot more square footage, even, I, I, I would venture to guess that it's even half again what we're considering playing fields, so the management of that active open space is just as expensive as, as maintaining the fields.
Yeah, I'm just concerned it's a double count, but I'm looking at, I'm looking Larry, did, when we, when we got the, when you did the city's total buyout, how many percentage did you come up with? For the total buyout, on their report on page forty.
They asked for a hundred and twelve, and I think they came up with ninety eight percent, so.
Okay, cause I, I, I'm looking at, I'm looking at overall, and even if we, even if we bought theirs lock, stock and barrel, and we subtract everything that we did, and even, even if we take off the five percent for the double, we're still above a hundred percent, you know, but at least, at least, at least my, uh, my, my great math skills leave me above that, so I, although there may be some points of contention here, like that, that five percent, there may be a point of contention on a couple of the ones that we have three percent, that we have a dissent, I think overall, we're still looking at night, we're looking at ninety seven, ninety eight percent for the buyout. And, and given the fact of the way the numbers worked out, correct me if I'm wrong, this, this, this allowed seventeen with that buyout, it allowed seventeen uni- seventeen something units an acre, and this.
Sixteen, I think in the HFR, sixteen point uh, sixteen point six seven units per acre, and that's uh, down from eighteen, which would be the maximum, and then.
And, but based on the, based on the maximum allowable density with the buyout, seventeen point eight four is still possible.
Yeah.
So, we're still under, even, even then, where even if you reduced it to ninety seven percent, you, we tossed another percent or two out, we're still at the sixteen point six seven
Yeah.
sixteen point seven units per acre, and so in the end, it really what we've discussed, we still come up with the, the same end result, or, or did I miss anything?
I don't know, I think you're, you're pretty close there. Commissioner Anderson?
Uh, thank you, I just wanted to, um, ask the developers, or Larry, um, we are now installing LEDs in all new, um subdivisions or whatever.
The streetlights, yeah.
So, so they are aware that they will be required to do the LED.
Yeah, along the streets, huh.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think we've been we've been requiring that now, I, I don't, do the city or? That's in the final statement, I know that Terrace Hills and a few others have been installed.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're right, I think that's the way to go.
Actually, I'm gonna do that one.
Any else, any, anybody else wanna throw out a discussion point, or deliberate on any of the, uh, buyouts? Commissioner Green?
Based on the findings set forth in this staff report, the, the design shown in the view of fifty six hundred area, uh, subarea preliminary development plan, and after reconsidering the density buyup contained in the WSPA as shown in the development plan, upon the evidence, the explanations received today, and our discussions, I'll add the word, all dis- our discussions, I move that the planning commission approve the view of fifty six hundred subarea preliminary development plan located at approximately fifty six hundred west, eighty two hundred south, in the MFR zone for fifty one units based on point, six point zero one acres, with a residential density of eight point five zero units per acre, and in the HFR zone, four hundred and eighty units on twenty eight point seven nine acres, with the residential density of sixteen point seven units per acre, subject to the conditions one through five listed in the staff report.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Green, second by Commissioner Kosci, any discussion, two motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. That concludes our agenda for this evening, unless there's anything further we need to discuss.
Move closer.
Thank you, it's a lot of work, and so.
Thank you.
The next one I'll be bringing in the same format.
I just wanna thank you all for welcoming me.
It's, it's gonna be great having you here.
It will be.
We have a motion adjourned by Commissioner Kosci.
I don't know that the planners are gonna be really happy with it, but.
Any objection to that, uh, that motion? We stand adjourned until January nineteenth.
Great. Thank you. Good to have you.
I'm glad to be here.